All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Everybody will stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Hi, Mr. Clerk, do we have a form?
We have a form.
All right, excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, the first thing on the agenda for tonight is a review of the minutes from the June 7th council meeting. We will take a moment and review. Let me make a note that the council meeting minutes that we're actually reviewing are from August the 2nd, 2021, not June 7th, as is listed on the agenda and that I mentioned. Another item that is accurate in the minutes, however, the information I provided was off and was not 214,000 on the updated construction plans for the parking lot. The actual number, and I'm going to reference it tonight, is 254,000 is the quote that the county provided. But I still stand by my original statement that I anticipate the cost will go up to about the 275, and that's the number that I'm sharing with council as an anticipated budget for the back parking lot. So it's correct in the minutes, as I stated last month, but my information was off. It's 254 rather than 214.
Okay. Yeah, that's absolutely what it is, I'm sorry.
I turned mine off. I mean, the volume down anyway.
Well, mine's down too, but it just vibrated, so. Are you catching vibration?
Yeah, I'm getting static from somebody's phone somewhere.
Not vibrating.
All right. It went away by moving them so.
Yeah, I just put mine in my pocket.
Okay.
And if you haven't noticed already Floyd, the speakers in the office will do that as well. If you have your phone too close to them, it'll start buzzing.
I noticed.
Have you noticed that? No?
Of course, it could be my hearing.
So as long as the microphones don't start whispering to Brad, we'll be okay. All right, if I can get a motion to approve the minutes.
I motion.
Stan, I think you're gonna have to.
Can I?
Can Stan? Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, so the first item of new business is to adopt the town of Sharpsburg's 2021 millage rate for the upcoming budget year. If you will flip to the public notice that was run in the New York Times Herald according to state statute and requirements and regulations, you will see that we are going to take the rollback of 8.935 mills and have a net M and O millage of 2.275. This is the same as last year's millage rate and for the six year in a row, we have kept the tax rate the same or lower than the previous year. That does increase our net taxes by $139, and it is a percentage tax increase of point five nine?
Half a percent.
Half a percent, so. And if this res, if council so chooses, if we can get a motion to accept the resolution.
Mr. Baker, you need to open the public hearing.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, so, so, so just call a public hearing order.
Right.
All right, public hearing. Open up the public hearing.
Anybody wish to speak?
Was there anybody that would like to speak to the public hearing for the new millage rate?
I like your sitting, Roger.
Thank you. All right, there being no comments, we'll close the public hearing and then ask for a resolution from council to approve the millage rate as we had discussed.
Okay.
All right, Stan has the first.
I second.
Cynthia has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is our budget review for the end of the third quarter and the month ending June 30th. If you will flip over to your pages, you will see under our income accounts, we have received 75% of our budget, which is exactly on track where we would like to be. For our expenses, we have paid out 54% of the budget. We do have some items to where we will be spending down, some funds, especially in areas like the library and maybe some maintenance and repairs. We do have some repairs and updates that need to happen over at Arbor Valley. Those will be coming to you guys once we get quotes, and we'll be getting some official quotes to repair stuff in September. But we are, we're at a good spot in our budget. We still have one quarter left, and we have received 45,000 of the 55,000 splosted for 2019. We have a small remaining balance for the splosted 2013, and then our splopped bank balance as of 7/31 is $117,000. So the excellent financial stewardship that clerk and staff have been providing continues through this, through this budget period and throughout this quarter. We do still intend to present a budget for consideration and review, probably starting in September, and we can talk about it in October, November, with approval coming eventually in January, no later than January. We could approve in December if we wanted to, but probably just hold that for January. But the budget is where it should be. We do have some money to spend out in the library fund, like I mentioned. We have $1,064 that is available to the librarian. Brad, I'd like to ask council if they would approve spending $1,000 at the library. Can I do that as part of the budget review, or should we add a new, amend the agenda?
I would amend the agenda.
Amend the agenda to add it.
Okay.
All right.
Under new business.
Under new business, okay. So Brandy has come to us with a handful of things that she would like to order for the library. Some of them are just basic day-to-day supplies, which is not as much of a concern to council, as some of the larger furniture items. She wants to order some benches and, did she include a table in that, Floyd? Did she want to get a table with it, or just the benches and chairs?
No, I just saw the benches.
Okay, so she's looking for benches, benches and chairs, and so what I'm going to do is I'm going to send this around to you guys, and y'all just note the ones that you like on here and that you think would be a good fit for the library.
So the benches, are they going to go outside or inside?
Uh, in, outside.
Outside.
They're going to go outside in the park, yes ma'am.
How many benches?
Two, I think.
The only sides?
How many chairs?
Probably two and two.
Two and two.
Yes, sir. And what I was, in my original ask for council was going to be to authorize to spend the $1,000 that we have remaining in there, or not to exceed $1,000, and those items being the year-end restocking and then getting the new furniture.
So the benches, is the only new furniture she wants to get? Buses and the chairs?
Yes, ma'am.
Buses or the chairs?
Mm-hmm.
She wants both?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Not sure.
I, 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 I'm gonna let her pick out, decide which one she needs. She's got it in email, I just need to confront with her. So if I can get a motion to amend the agenda to add the expenditure for the library?
Motion.
I second it.
Stan has the first, Cynthia has the second. All in favor to amend? Unanimous, thank you. So under new business, I would like to ask council for authorization to spend $1,000 in the library for general supplies and materials to include benches and chairs and the cleaning supplies that Brandy has requested, not to exceed $1,000.
Do Brandy already have the idea which one she thinks would be best for, suited for?
No, ma'am, she wanted to give council several choices to pull from, but she hasn't indicated a preference.
Trust her, Jen, whatever she wants to do is family.
That was absolutely my plan.
What'd you say, Stan?
Let her choose what she thinks she needs best. As long as she's got a, you know, not going to go over $1,000, I'm good with that.
Okay.
And two, I will, since council member Good and council member Teagle aren't here tonight, I will call them and bring them up to speed on it before we pass it along to Brandy, so that way they're aware before we, before she makes the expenditures.
And that's $1,000 inclusive, including the supplies as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think there's a third.
Do we motion?
There's one left.
We haven't yet.
I couldn't remember.
I know. Have a motion to spend the money in the library fund?
I motion.
All right, so Cynthia has the first, Stan has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank y'all. All right, there being no other new business, we have no old business under, on the agenda. Open the floor for public comments. Ms. Polly?
Traffic.
I'm sorry?
Traffic, once again.
Traffic?
Being I now, once again, have a concern about turning down on Main Street flying.
Mm-hmm.
Stan is hell already with those white automobiles that are coming in there, and it is slowing them down briefly, but they used to now, kind of like they did the sign.
Mm-hmm.
And they fly in there, I can see the red lights, just as that, that's my driveway, so they won't go fast over the block. I would like to see a stalled 35 mile an hour bus entering. Stan's got a son or grandson, nephew, something that rides that same bus that Shelby rides.
Now.
And it turns, it comes out and it turns left, so he has to go through two rows of traffic to go north on Highway 54, and it's, you know what is happening, why.
Yes, ma'am.
And you've got that big old bulky bus, they just need, there's a sign down there where the traffic light is, which is really not necessary because you've got the traffic light.
Where you said you want to put a sign at?
At the main street, just like the one.
On Main Street?
Well, no, no.
Or on 54?
54 here, Main Street here. It needs to be on 54 to slow them down so that bus can go out without getting crashed.
That's got to meet DOT approval, though.
DOT will do 35 on that highway.
They put a sign up down the road?
They'll do 45 on there.
They got a sign up down the road?
I've tried to get them to do the same thing in City of Ture, and then they won't do it.
Well, then move the one that started at the light, because you got the light there, they go stop anyway and move it up to that place. They fly there. And if you put it one, they should be able to put it two.
That's where I see it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I can, I can reach out to DOT and see what additional improvements we can do at that intersection.
Which way are you talking about them going, Polly? Towards 16 or going towards Peachtree City?
The bus turns out, it comes down Ture time, it comes down Main Street, stops at the stop sign, and then goes across two rows of traffic to go north on toward.
On 54.
On 54. And getting through two rows of traffic there is not only hard, cars just don't slow down unless it's somebody.
Which way are they going the fastest, when they're going this way or this way on 54? Going toward Peachtree City?
Well, it depends on whether they get a light at the corner, and it depends on whether somebody's going into the post office. It just, it's not.
I would recommend, Blue, if we could use that radar thing, if we get it fired up, put it down there, you know, to show speed anyway, see if that will help slow them down a little bit.
I don't think you can put it on. You said you couldn't put it on.
See.
Oh, that's right, you can't.
There's a sign.
Well, when the one time sheriff's office put it up here on 154.
See, but was that the mobile unit or is that one set on a post?
The mobile unit.
Okay.
But doesn't sheriff's office have different jurisdiction of where they can put theirs versus what the town can do?
I believe so.
I don't find a guy yesterday morning doing 70 through town.
Oh, I believe it.
Down 54.
I believe it, oh yeah.
He passed into it, he'd be going 70 mile an hour in front of the church.
It's the sign, they've already got a sign at the light that says, speed limit 35 miles an hour. I think it says bus, bus entering or something of one.
Mm-hmm.
They should be able to put one down one block, or you can move that one there where there's a light already to that other place. Yeah, she may have got one over there one time.
Yeah, I remember.
A lot of folks thinks that's just a suggestion.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They thought.
Think it's just a suggestion to go 35 miles an hour?
Well, it, it may not work, but it's.
I mean.
You've done everything you can do at that point.
Mm-hmm, right.
If somebody gets killed or hurt, there was nothing else you could do. Like it is, there's one more thing you could do.
Yeah, and, and that, and that is part of the troubles that I think we're having is we're, we have tried so many things, and the traffic volume just is what the traffic volume is, but I will still go back to DOT and look at what improvements we can make at Main and 54, because I think that is an underutilized intersection, and we could do more to make it a little bit better. I don't know if we need to remove those stanchions and put in a proper right-hand turning lane so the traffic can continue to flow, or if.
Well, that would be worse, because then wouldn't that slow down?
See, and that's what I'm saying, even if we went to move those, that would, that could possibly make it worse because the through traffic keeps going.
The post office turn slows it down.
Is the one that slows it down enough.
Also, I think that one that got put on down at the light, got put on when, before she nearly got hit, and you know, I called the school.
I think so too.
I think they just put it the wrong place, to tell you the truth.
That's a very good possibility.
Because they got it put up right about that same time.
Okay, I'll talk with DOT about moving that sign up and see if I can get them to pull some traffic data for it, because if we could show that the numbers have gone up, then that's additional justification for the, whatever additional improvements we make. But we'll, we'll, we'll work with DOT. We've, we've talked with them a couple of times this week about a couple of other things in town, and I'll, I'll add this to the, to the list of it.
DOT told me that other time that all it took was the mayor to question it.
Oh, okay. Well, I hope it's that easy.
I do too, because I said, because they were going to do it, and then they found out it was a city event.
Okay.
The mayor's got one.
Okay, okay, well then I, well I'll certainly ask them to move that sign up.
I'm persistent.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. It's one of the things we love about you.
And loud.
Sometimes that's what you got to be. Any other comments from the public?
Who do you use to get your DOT information from? Is it Natalie Dale?
No, she's the, she's the, she's the top head of communication. Normally I get it from the, from the District 3 traffic people.
Okay.
Yeah, she's the official spokesperson. That being public, the comment, public comments, do we have any comments from council? Ms. Cynthia, I'll start with you.
No, sir.
Stan? You got anything? Okay.
Well, one thing I was going to give you later, I'll go ahead and mention it now. If you would tomorrow, call the trash people, and they didn't pick up my recycle last week, and ask them if they're going to pick it up this week or what's going on. I have more issues with that, picking up recycled than anything.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jones, what do you have for the clerks' minutes?
Well, first, as a reminder, that since you passed your millage resolution, before you leave today, I need you to sign the millage resolution so we can get it out. Secondly, as a reminder, if you're going to run for office next week, qualifying is next week, it's Monday through Wednesday, the 16th through the 18th hours are from 9:00 to 4:30 PM, and you can register to be on the ballot at the Keweenaw County Board of Elections office, and that's what I have.
Thank you. So rolling into the mayor's updates, I'll just, I'll just start from the top. The parking lot update, we have bumped construction back to January 2022 because of the county's construction schedule and weather, and then our own events in December. We did not want to have the parking lot being constructed in the middle of the holiday season. So as much as I would have liked to have done it in '21, it's going to be better to wait until '22. So they will hopefully project it to start in 2022. The next step for them is to get us the final, or as close to final as they can get, construction budget, which I will then bring back to council to approve. The amount that they provided at the initial meeting, where we talked about the scheduling, was an initial price of 254,000. However, I said last week, and I will say it again, I anticipate that to go up to about 275, just because you're going to have cost overruns, you're going to have a little bit of extra concrete here, a little bit of dirt there, and it's, it's going to raise up. But I'm thinking with the county providing the labor and us doing the materials, we're going to get it for a great price of about 275,000. For the work that we are doing to not only improve the parking lot, but also to expand the park and the walking trails around the park, it's going to be a great deal for the citizens, it's going to be a great deal for, for town hall, and it's really going to enhance what we're able to provide to the community. We do have several businesses that are out of compliance in that they are operating a business in town without a business license. We're going to be working with the, our attorney and then code enforcement as needed to bring them back into compliance. I don't anticipate it being too rigorous to get them to comply, it's just a matter of doing things the right way, and, and we've got to follow up when people own and operate businesses and don't register them with the town. And it's not so much as a permitting or inspection standpoint, we just, we, we just need to know what's, who's operating businesses in town. We have codes and ordinances and rules that we have to follow, and unfortunately, that is one of them. So as we work with those, if we have any other issues, one of the remedies is to bring them before council, and then council make a decision as far as what the next steps are. If that becomes a possibility, then of course we'll coordinate and, and we'll have the attorney present, and he will help walk us through that.
So how many is it?
It, three that I know of. And this, the next, we kind of flies, rolls into the next item, which is code enforcement. We have a number of properties that are maybe violating some of our code enforcements. What I would like to do is we will begin a process of outreach and education between now and January, where we provide resources, ways for them to come into compliance, and advice from safe bill to, in the attorney, of course, to make sure that everything is, everything is proper and in compliance, and then we. And talk for a couple of hours, and then have a meal, and talk for a couple more hours, and then come out with some strategic priorities that council would like to see, council and staff would like to see take place in '22 and then in '23, because that'll give us kind of a template or a game plan to go to as we go into the next two years. Floyd, do you want to say anything about a town hall update around the, the training and staffing? Tools that he needs to be successful in his, in his role. Georgia Power is in the middle of doing some survey work to identify overhead power lines that will be buried in the next 12 to 18 months. They are working in town, they are going to be doing it in, along 54, and they marked a couple of places on Main and Tarrentine, but Georgia Power will be reaching out directly to the residents about easements and right-of-way access. I do not think they're going through the town at it for this point, at this point, but that may change, but if you see Georgia Power trucks, that may be, or Georgia Power crews or survey crews, that may be part of what they're doing. There's no action or updates on the sponsor of teacher breakfast. I mentioned earlier in the budget discussions that we have some repairs and maintenance that needs to occur on the own town property in general, but specifically at Arbor Valley. The garage door has had some issues over the last couple of months. They had, it broke, we got it repaired, but we need to replace it. We are working on getting the quotes, they are anywhere from, what was it, Floyd, $3,000 to $6,000?
Yes, sir.
About that. We are still, we've got two bids and we're waiting on a third?
We contacted three people. We've only got one officially, the other went out, hasn't provided a bid yet, the third person is sort of in the ether world right now.
Okay, all right, so we're working on the bids. When we get those, we will come back to you. It's just regular maintenance.
Regular wear and care.
Yeah, it, it, you know, and it's just something, it's a piece of equipment that's going to fail. There are some handyman duties that should be taken up over there, we've got a couple railings that are loose over on the Arbor Valley office, and we'll just get that secure. just get that secure. If it's above the spending limit, I'll reach out to you guys and make sure it's okay before we do it.
Is Arbor Valley still talking about moving?
I haven't heard anything recently. And anything that I had heard was all second and third hand, so I hadn't heard anything directly from them. That is everything that I had under the mayor's minutes. Do I have any questions from council? I know that I kind of sped through it and I apologize for that. It's just a lot of information, a lot of things that we've had going on and without having a meeting in the month of July, it was just some things that had piled up. Do I have any questions from public?
I like speaking at meetings.
Ah, well then we'll just keep on going on. We do need to go into executive session to discuss property. If I can get a motion to enter into executive session?
I motion.
All right. Cynthia has the first.
To discuss real estate.
To discuss real estate.
Second.
Stan has the second. All in favor? Unanimous? If we can step into the back?
Donate.
I don't need to make a motion on anything that happened in the executive session.
No, just need a motion to authorize a way to sign the affidavit that what we discussed in executive session was allowed under the law.
Okay. Did you get that?
I got it.
Okay, all right. All right, if I can get a motion to... There being no other business before council, if I can get a motion to adjourn?
One...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I motion to what Brad said.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
I motion to adjourn.
Now, there being no other business before council.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Stan has the first.
I second.
All in favor?
I second.
Unanimous? Thank y'all. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
And I have...